Good evening and welcome to the September sixteenth meeting of the East Bridgewater School Committee. We'd like to thank E.B. Cam for recording and we will, I'll take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
We have some folks here for public comment. Okay, so for public comment, we'll have you come up and sit at the table there. And we limit public comment to three minutes per speaker. First, we have Lynn McDonald.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening, good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I'm here, okay. I wrote some notes because I knew I wouldn't stay on track for three minutes, so I'm going to go ahead and follow this. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lynn McDonald and I'm the proud parent of a fourth grade student at the Mitchell School. First, I want to thank the superintendent and school committee for the ongoing work to support our students and staff. I know that budgeting is complex and that every staffing decision involves difficult trade-offs. I'm here tonight because I am deeply concerned about the recent reduction in nursing staff at our schools. From two full-time nurses down to just one for a population of 620 students, and that doesn't even include the staff at the middle school. Among these students are three children living with type one diabetes, including my own daughter, who requires daily monitoring and urgent interventions when their blood sugars rise and drop and spike. Many students with asthma, severe allergies, special needs, and serious mental health challenges. Plus, the countless unexpected injuries and illnesses that occur every day in a school setting, never mind the potential of a school violence which is so prevalent as of late. This is not routine care. These are potentially life-threatening conditions that require immediate skilled medical response. Substituting school teachers and instructional staff, support staff, is not safe or viable. And I'm curious as to, you know, what kind of credentials are required for these people to be manning the nurse's office, you know, these days while the nurse is away. That's one of my concerns. With only one nurse on duty, there'll inevitably, inevitably be times when she is unavailable, whether she's responding to another emergency, at lunch, out sick, or on a field trip. That means there'll be times when over 600 children have no access to a trained medical professional at all. This is a serious student safety issue and a liability risk for the district. I understand that this decision was budget-driven, but school nursing is a core safety function, just like bus safety, security, fire alarms. The cost of a nurse's salary is small compared to the potential cost, both human and financial, of a preventable tragedy. I'm asking the superintendent and this committee to reassess the nurse staffing model at the school. Please consider restoring a second nurse and if necessary, explore creative funding solutions or grants to make it possible. I know the West Bridgewater School system had applied for a grant and they have a per diem nurse come in to help with some of the administrative stuff, so I'm wondering if that might be an option moving forward as well. The safety of our children must remain a top priority. I appreciate your time and your thoughtful consideration of this urgent issue. I'd welcome the opportunity to attend future meetings and I hope this can be continued to be discussed as an agenda item. I'll just add on a quick blurb to that. You know, I've had a chance to speak with some of the teachers, the nurse. You know, things are just not running smoothly at the Mitchell School. There's kids waiting out in the hallway for long periods of time. The staff in the office is not trained on medical. I mean, they're, they're support staff and, you know, I just think that something terrible could go wrong, you know, and, you know, the medical needs of the children are becoming more complex. I know this was a post-COVID move. You know, we hired an extra nurse during COVID, but if you just look at, you know, what the adjustment counselors are doing and, you know, there's just so many more complex needs than when I would say I was at school in East Bridgewater where I attended. So I would just really like the, the committee to consider moving forward when they're doing the budget, you know, trying to get that extra nurse staff again. That's where I'm coming from. But thank you guys for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your comments.
Any questions for me or anything? Or, not sure how this works. Do I?
So unfortunately, public comment isn't necessarily kind of a back and forth. That's kind of a state law. It's not like, I think we're responsible for.
Okay.
I can clarify for the committee. We have 1.5 nurses for Mitchell School. So as Mrs. McDonald mentioned, we had two nurses per building during COVID. Certainly, that was a luxury for us. As, as you all know, as we start to make budgetary decisions, we look at where those luxuries are and unfortunately, sometimes have to scale back on them. So we only eliminated one nurse district-wide, so we have five full-time nurses, which is still very unusual for districts around us.
Just by size.
So we have one nurse at Central School, one nurse at Mitchell School, two nurses here just for the total enrollment, and a float nurse. And that float nurse spends half of her day at Mitchell School and half of her day at Central School.
Central.
As far as other staff, they are used strictly to have a body present in the event that the nurse is assisting a child on the playground, just so that nobody shows up to the nurse's office and doesn't have someone to report something to. They're not tending to, to students, you know, for any medical needs. So I met with Mr. Paquette today. I spoke with Mrs. Berendret, our lead nurse, just about are there any concerns? Is there, you know, difficulties managing the needs of students? Have we had any students that haven't had their needs tended to? And the reports are no.
Okay.
Thank you.
But certainly, and we've had a chance to-
Yes.
-to talk. Mrs. McDonald's been in to meet with me. She's met with Mr. Paquette. And certainly, I don't want to put any child in jeopardy at all either. So we are monitoring it. Mrs. Berendret, as the lead nurse, is adjusting her times as when she's at each building, just to see, you know, is there an uptick certain times of day where her support is most needed. I will say, what does become a little bit more challenging for our nurses is being able to do the paperwork with any teacher. It's difficult to do those things during the, the workday. And oftentimes, as Mrs. McDonald knows, you know, after, after-school hours, you're looking at email, you're maybe responding to email, getting some paperwork, doing your plans. And that's unusual for our nurses because they've been able to do that during the school day with two nurses, but certainly, they need to be a little bit more creative as to how they do that clerical piece, knowing that their first responsibility is tending to students during the day.
Thank you. Am I able to comment on that or not necessarily?
I don't believe.
No.
Okay.
You can tell me.
That's fine, I will.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Andrew Heath.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Andrew Heath. I am the school committee representative for Southeastern Regional Vocational School for the town of East Bridgewater. I just wanted to let the school committee member know, as well as all the admin and Superintendent Williams, that our culinary program will be offering to the town a first responders' and community lunch. It's going to be set up at the town hall on November 21st. Friday, it's 10, about 10:30 in the morning until 12:30 in the afternoon. I believe Chef Tessia has a Mexican buffet on the menu for everybody. He's been doing this throughout other towns. It's worked out very well. He wanted to reach out to the town of East Bridgewater and get it done here. So he has done that through the town admin's office. So there's that.
Is it at the town hall or the community center?
I believe it's at the town hall. That's what I was told.
He told it was at the community.
We had a department head meeting this morning and Mr. Seale, I thought, had said, but we can find out.
That's, yeah. From what I was told this morning, it's, it's at the town.
We'll find-
I just don't want to miss it.
Neither do I, but I'll be away, unfortunately. Also wanted to bring everybody up to date on the current DESI lottery. We don't know what it's going to do for any of our nine sending districts on enrollment. How many students are going to get in from each town? We have no idea. It is a true lottery. We have done a little bit of weighted selection where if you're absent for less than 27 days, you get an extra ticket in the lottery. And there was one other one that we did. We did not do discipline because we don't feel like any way should get more points for discipline. So just to alert you to that, that that's going to be coming this year for the graduating class of 2031, I believe it is. I know our superintendent will be reaching out because we're going to have to start talking on what, what possible failures or, you know, could happen. I mean, we could get zero kids from East Bridgewater enrolled. We could get 50. That would be a problem.
So it's a full lottery across the board for every applicant, not so many slots per-
Correct. We have never had allotments per each town. That's been a common misnomer that I've heard throughout, that, you know, there's always 20 kids from East Bridgewater or there's always, you know, 200 from Brockton. That is not the case. We do not have allotments. We may have to start talking about allotments to protect our towns. I know if we took 50 kids from East Bridgewater, that would be a problem for the town. So, not our call. DESI did it in their short side. And they didn't see this. We have alerted to the problem and they don't give us any guidance at all. So, any questions for me on that?
No. Thank you for the update. And I think that's a great program that your culinary team is doing. That's awesome.
It is. It's, all the programs down there do a great job, but Chef Tessia and his culinary students are fantastic. So you'll enjoy a great lunch, anyone that can attend that. I promise you that.
Maybe just one, do we have an idea as to enrollment or kids seeking enrollment at vocational schools? Like how percentage up it is?
I do not have those numbers and that's something I can certainly get from my superintendent. I know that's something that, you know, she wanted to speak with Superintendent Williams about as well. Obviously, you'll be in the new incoming superintendent for East Bridgewater this year. I don't know if you've been to Southeastern Regional?
I have. Not, not in recent years though, so I'd love a tour.
Love to have you down for a tour to show you what we, you know, what we have to offer down there now in our new expansion. We're starting a STEM wing that we should be into next week, next year. It's going to expand programs, which is also going to expand enrollment in Southeastern Regional by 25 students per year, about 100 kids. It's going to take more from the towns and, you know, and the city of Brockton. So, but I don't have exact numbers right now. On average, I think we've been 17, 15 to 17 kids per year.
Okay.
Roughly. We have run some preliminary lottery, you know, playing with it. It hasn't affected too many of the towns badly, except for the town of Stoughton keeps coming up as a much larger portion of enrollment due to their population and how many applications we get from that town. So, but we'll see. We're at the mercy of DESI at this point. So, don't know what's going to happen this year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close public comment. And then we'll go to Ainsley for her update from the Student Advisory Council.
I have a couple of updates for the high school, middle school, and central school. Start with the high school first. So far, it's been a great start to the year. And this year, for the first time, we're doing, the seniors get to paint their parking spots and we're doing that this Saturday. All fall sports and clubs have officially started, doing elections and, yep, just getting those started. The AP scores came back great. Also, drama started last week. Auditions were Thursday and Friday. The first football game was also last Friday. And so far, it's been kind of a quiet start to the year here. At the middle school, the school year is off to a great start. The building, the grounds, and classrooms were all well-prepared. Teachers, students, and staff were fully prepared. It was just simply an excellent start. Fall picture day is this Thursday, September 18th. The drama production of Aladdin also started. Over 120 students have been participating for the last two Mondays. The September calendar is very packed with many different things like peer mentors, K C Club, tech team, literacy team, learning walks, spirit days, faculty senate, safety care training, and an early release day. That's just to name a few. The central school classroom teachers are taking the first few weeks to work on positive relationships and creating a classroom family. Central school first grade family lunches started and will finish up on the 19th. Students have done a wonderful job learning school routines and expectations. And the fall baseline assessment window is open and closes on October 2nd. Teachers have been administering the diables, I think that's how you say it, the IRI diagnostic and the phonics screeners. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Ainsley.
We're going to take one thing out of order. So we have some representation from the high school to talk about a drama club field trip. We don't want to make you stay through the, so you guys come up.
Traveling mic.
Traveling mic.
Good evening. I'm Mickey Lasley. I think I'll, I think I know pretty much everyone here. I run the drama program at the middle school and the high school. I've had the pleasure of doing that, which I realized when I was talking to Gina not long ago. This is my 15th year here at the high school. So that brings me probably to about 17, 18 years doing drama at the middle school. And before that, I was PTO. So I've been there a long time. So today, though, I am here mainly to discuss our Disney trip with the high schoolers. We have done it twice before, pre-COVID, and it was a success. We don't go just for the fun of it. We actually go so that the kids can learn something. We actually get two workshops. We're looking at two workshops while we're there. And they are by Disney professionals who come. I think this year, we're looking at one that's dance and one that's performance-based. So they'll learn something. They actually have to do like a little audition. They actually learn something and then put on a show for us. There's not many of us, but we still get to see it. So we don't have a huge group. We have 15 students, which is great. And we have some family members who decided to go. Not all of them are chaperones. Some just want to go because they just want the experience with their kids. And where it's, oh, and we'll also be going to see Cirque du Soleil, which is a great show for them to see because not everyone gets to see a professional show, so at least when we're there. We also do a little treat. We schedule some time and they block off a spot at Epcot for us. So it's a private spot and we get dessert while we're watching the fireworks at night. So that's always a fun thing for the kids. And then we do go to the park when the workshops aren't happening. So we're there for three days, traveling one day on each end. And we do have three park passes. So just depending on how everything falls, we hopefully will be there for, maybe at the parks for like two and a half days, but the workshops come first. It is mainly an educational experience for them. Any questions?
No, but my oldest went on it, which as you know, and I highly recommend this trip. Good for the kids. I know she had a blast, so.
We had a very good time last two times.
That's awesome. Okay, great. So we, we have, yeah, we have that as an action item.
That seems like a lifetime ago.
It does seem like a lifetime. And because of COVID, and then, you know, we didn't have as many kids participate in drama at the high school.
18, 2018 you went?
I believe that was the last time, yeah. And before that, I think it was 2015.
Wow.
So it's been a while. So it was, it was time. The kid, especially the group we have that are going, they've been on me for years. Like, okay, when are we going? When are we going? And I'm like, ah, so.
It's a big deal to perform down at Disney.
Yeah, well, and this time we're not, last time we did a performance. This time, we won't be doing a performance because we're not large enough to do a performance. So it's more about the educational piece and seeing, one of my favorite things last time when we saw Cirque, we actually went backstage. Sometimes kids, when they're on a school setting, don't always believe, like, ah, she doesn't know what she's talking about. She's just, you know, she's just Mickey. She's over at, you know, at the high school. And when we went backstage, like so many of the things we do were the same. And I was like, look, I know what I'm talking about. And it's just a good experience for them to know. We do a lot of the same things that professional theaters do because we have to, you know, and one for safety and two for educational reasons. It's good for them to see it all. So.
That's awesome. Thank you. So we'll vote on that as an action item.
Okay.
When we get to action items.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ms. Lasley is the coordinator for the Paris room trip. I don't know if you want to get that too.
Okay, we can talk about the Paris trip before we-
Hello, my name's Cassie Lasley and I'm the ceramics and digital photography teacher here at East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School. Last year, I had the opportunity to be a chaperone on the Spain and Italy trip with Deb Sealy, and I was absolutely hooked. I loved traveling with the kiddos and it was a really good experience to see things through their eyes and watch them experience culture. So I was in connection with the EF tour rep that we have, and I'm hopefully seeking approval for a trip in 2027 over April break for Italy and France. And I have a couple, like printouts here because I realized I don't think they were, I submitted one with there, so, or like the actual kind of breakdown. If you guys wanted to see it, I have a couple copies here. We are, me along with the rep, we're hoping to have around 30 to 36 kids enroll in this trip. So that way, it's not so large. For my first trip, kind of running the shindig, so we would look at opening it up to grades, current students who are ninth, 10th, 11th, so that there would be 10th, 11th, 12th, hopefully participating on this trip. And then goodness forbid, we don't get enough interest. We could always look at things from there, but that's the goal. Questions so far?
What's that?
Any questions at all? I don't, I don't know how deep you want me to go into the plan.
We didn't vote on this yet, right? No. This isn't something we voted on yet. Did you submit paperwork to the principal yet?
I did.
Yeah, we, there's paperwork.
Yep. And a lot of those things were to be determined because I can't really tell how many kids are going to be on the trip or whatever it might be. And so the number of chaperones is dependent because they have a six-to-one ratio. So a lot of that stuff is to be figured out as we're getting interest in having students sign up.
It's just a good opportunity. If you have anything you want, Ms. Lasley, to factor in or consider when planning, obviously, we've got, you know, a good amount of time between now and the trip. If you want a representative, I know in the past, we've had representatives from the agencies come and share kind of the itinerary of what the trip looks like. So certainly, we could coordinate that.
This is definitely a more arts-based trip, which is what I was hoping for. There's going to be a lot of focus on going to museums, an actual fresco activity where the students get to do some hands-on art activities and learning experiences while we're there. And so that's the primary focus for the excursions, you would say, during the day, is more museum trips and art classes.
That's great.
I think it's an excellent opportunity.
I'm, I'm excited. I'm pretty, pretty stoked about the idea. So I'm hoping things-
And they'll have plenty of time to save.
Exactly.
I would say not only save, but you might want to consider fundraising leg or arm for those kids who are interested in going, just to help assist.
Absolutely. Yeah, I was chatting with the EF rep about things like that. And they do have a scholarship that I want to make sure all the students are aware of. You film yourself for two to three minutes explaining kind of why this trip would mean a lot to you. And I want to make sure that the students know about that as well because every penny counts, especially when you're signing up for a big trip. But absolutely, I know it's a big chunk of change. So hopefully, we'd find ways to get together as a group because we do have that time-
Yeah.
-to figure things out there.
That's great.
Do you know how you would be traveling between Italy and France, by train or plane?
I don't at the moment. I can always get you guys that information from the representative.
I was just curious.
Be interested.
The Spain and Italy trip that we did, it was by plane.
Yeah.
Well, this is great. Thank you so much.
No, thank you, guys. Did anyone want one of these to check it out or?
Sure.
Sure, okay.
Thanks for taking the initiative and wanting to take the kids on a trip.
Absolutely, I love it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we will go into the superintendent's report.
Great. So first up, opening days. I know, I think the last time we met, we were just getting ready to open schools. So we had our, obviously, our staggered starts, our grades one through 11 starting. And then the following week, our kindergarten preschoolers started. All buildings have very successful open houses. This year, the junior, senior high school curriculum night, Mrs. McPartlin and myself were able to be there for the opening when Mr. Silver addressed the parents. And then they had an opportunity to follow their child's schedule and hear from the teachers about the expectations in the class, what will be taught over the course of the year. One of the things that we were contemplating in the past couple of years, because it was low enrollment, as to whether the junior, senior high schools should maybe rethink a curriculum night, maybe do something more virtual. However, we were very pleased with the turnout this year. So we're hopeful that that will continue. And certainly, talking with staff about information that they'll want to provide during these evenings that can't otherwise be shared, so that parents are coming out and taking advantage of it. So school is up and running. You'll hear a little bit later, the busing update. That seems to be one of the more challenging issues for us, mostly for Ms. Shea. As you know, with the budget reductions, we eliminated one bus in the fleet of 13 buses per school, and now we're at 12. So that led to more community stops, especially in the cul-de-sacs in the neighborhoods. So we did hear from families, I would say, maybe 70, would you say?
At least.
And really just concerned because of the change, that they were used to getting the bus either right outside their home or could see the bus stop from their home. And now with the community stops, it has led students to have to maybe go down the end of the road. Concerns about students waiting on busy streets. However, we reassured families that they're not to wait on the busy street. They're still to wait on the sidewalk. We ensured that every community stop has sidewalk access. I went out to a few stops. Mr. Shea has been out to a number of stops. All concerning stops were observed by the police department. We wanted to make sure that we had their assurance that they were safe stops. I think a lot of it came down to just the change. You know, certainly, now parents have to partner with us in helping to get their students down to the bus stops as opposed to, you know, being able to look outside the window. It seems to be quieting down a little bit.
A little bit, yeah.
And so we're hopeful that, you know, everyone will continue to partner with us on making sure that students are getting to the stops and realizing it's, it's not only about, well, it's mostly about the students being safe and we need the parents to partner with us with that, but also making sure that all students have that access to get to school. Mr. Shea and I have had lots of conversations with families about when we're talking about budget reductions, you know, we could start having to talk about what we're legally obligated to provide. And that's busing to all students K6 over two miles. We've been able to continue having the pay-to-ride option so that all students, regardless of distance, regardless of grade level, can access a bus. Also explaining to families that although there is a user fee, we would have to charge families double, more than double what they're paying right now, to actually fund the bussing. So the fees are not funding the busing. Obviously, they're helping to offset the busing. But that came up in a lot of conversations. I think when, when paying a user fee, you know, people feel as if they're paying for the, the full service. And it's just a part of the service. So, and certainly, we don't want any student at a dangerous stop. We don't want to put any students in harm. So certainly, we encourage parents to reach out if they're concerned about the stops. We have made lots of adjustments if they have been directly safely, safety-related. But, you know, convenience is something that's hard for us to accommodate, knowing that we have so many students that we're looking at and so many stops that we're looking at. It really was a long budget conversation. I think in hindsight, I realize I needed- It really was a long, uh, budget conversation. I think, um, in hindsight, I realize I needed, I, I should have communicated that sooner, um, in letting parents know once we, um, certified the budget that it would result in a reduction in, although we didn't know the bus routes at the time, uh, for families to be aware that bus routes will be impacted with the reduction. Uh, and so that's something that certainly I've learned through the process. And I'm, and hopefully we don't have to cut anymore, um, and, and limit the busing options for families as we move forward. Um, but certainly something we have to be aware of, uh, depending on the, the forecast of the budget for the next year. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I thi- I think some, uh, parents, uh, are upset that we don't get back to them as quickly as possible when they have a concern. And I, I think, you know, Kathy and I are two people trying to resolve issues. And Kathy has been getting back to them saying, we, we acknowledge your concern, we're looking into it. And it's just the constant communication from parents that they're upset that we're not, we're not getting back to them. But I just.
We have a system for monitoring or tracking how we're getting back to them or?
Uh, Ca- Kathy does. She created one this year. In years past, we haven't. We're, we're trying to keep up as, as fast as we can as, as well as doing everything else we're supposed to be doing in the office.
I think it's great that you guys got the police department involved and had them, you know, address some of the parents' concerns as well. Um, it's great to see the community come together like that.
There's been a lot of cooperation, even, you know, um, reaching out to Mr. Haynes, the DPW went down, cut limbs back where a sidewalk had been blocked with some overhanging limbs. So.
Excellent.
Definitely been a lot of coordination. You know, certainly we need to give a lot of credit to Kathy Conway. I mean, that's been, you know, a, a lot of her responsibility, getting those emails, keeping them organized, making sure that, um, Mr. Shay is meeting with the bus company to double check on those. Um, so.
Yeah, Detective Montero came by today and, and again, offered his assistance to, to follow buses. Just to make sure that, uh, people are obeying the laws of the, of the road. I mean, we are, and one thing that came up last year with, with the bus company is, um, they actually have cameras now that will, would catch drivers passing a bus while stopping. That's something I'm going to talk to Lucini to see if, um, we can revisit that and maybe that's something we.
That's winding its way through DESI as well, if I recall, with regards to becoming a law.
I believe it was in January. I believe it was enacted in January as a law. I could be wrong, but I'm, I'm pretty sure I saw something that it was enacted as a law in, in January.
Do we have a lot of cars that pass the buses?
Do, uh, do we? I mean, I, I've been at, at, I don't know how many bus stops I've been at, but I've witnessed, uh, cars passing. Not, not when a bus has come to a complete stop. Uh, uh, I haven't witnessed a car pass it as a complete stop, but when, when the bus lights go on, people should be stopping.
Right. Not speeding up and going around.
Right. And I have witnessed cars speeding up and, and, and passing the bus. A bus driver's a great, uh, they, they stop, they, they will wave the kids along when, when it's, when it's safe to, to get on the bus and cross the street if possible, but.
And the other piece, you know, as we're, routes have been solidified, safety checks are being done, but we still have parents signing students up as well. So we've got kind of both going on at the same time as parents are still signing students up. Then students need to be added to routes, routes need to be looked at again to see if they need to be adjusted based on, uh, those locations. So, uh, it makes it a little bit more complicated.
New parents moving into the district.
Happen next year.
Please say that ever, yeah.
That is not going to happen.
No, there's, there's deadlines for signing up and, and saying, you know, routes will be complete, completed as of this date. If you haven't signed up, we can't ensure that you're, but inevitably it happens that families sign up after, um, the fact. So.
We've had, we've had over three hundred.
Three hundred sign up after the deadline? Oh, my God. That's a large amount.
How many students total take the bus?
Uh, twelve, about twelve hundred.
Do you remember when we did, I think we did this several years ago, how if people signed up after the fact, they were incur a fee for being late? Do we do that still?
Yeah.
How are we doing with collections on that?
Uh, I'd have to check with Kathy, but I, I've. Collections so far, based upon what I've, I've seen being deposited are pretty much on what, what I had budgeted for collections.
Uh, I think this is gonna, uh, uh, to Aaron's point, uh, I want to make sure we acknowledge the challenging decisions we have to make and thank the community for kind of understanding that these are challenging times. And they're not behind us. There's, we're still going to be facing some further challenging times financially ahead of us. So any lessons that we can learn now and apply to next year will only benefit the community and hopefully make things a little bit smoother on the staff. Thank you very much for, you know, having to navigate through some uncomfortable or choppy waters, so to speak. So thank you for that. Um, I would just make sure that as we go forward, that the services, it's, it's a challenge because to Gina's point, we want to make sure everybody's, has safe and accessible kind of opportunities to get to school and so forth. But we're also responsible for the financial side of it, uh, to the community as well. Uh, and we need their input on what exactly they're looking for. Do they want us to be financially, uh, which is our, you know, one of our three tenants that we're responsible for is running a financially sound, um, district? Or do they want the services? Cause there's costs associated with that, so.
Um, just a curiosity question. Are there three, is it three hundred families or three hundred students? And there could be multiple students per family.
Uh, three hundred students.
Does three hundred students require you have to get another bus?
No.
Okay.
No, but it's a lot of adjustments for bus routes.
Yeah, it, it's a lot of adjustments, uh, for bus routes, you know. We'll get some, uh, parents that, you know, we create a community stop, but there's only one student at that stop. And that student has to walk up the street. And so they want us to change the stop to the house because there's only one student at the stop. And then when you add three hundred students, all of a sudden there's a, another student that lives someplace else that would go to this community stop, but you moved it to the.
Yeah.
It's, it's a no-win situation. We just, people need to sign up. We need to hold steady and get people to sign up.
Early.
Early. And that's my goal.
What was our deadline this year?
It was July thirty-first, was it?
It will be.
And we can say, you know, that if you've signed up by this date, then you, you can start busing at the start of school. If you don't sign up by that date, give another date that then busing will be accessible.
That's what I was going to say with regards to making sure that, uh, we're collecting on some of these fees that are challenging. So there needs to be an opportunity.
And, and there will be a date that, you know, as of this date, if fees haven't been paid, there'll be discontinuation of service. However.
Which I never want to say.
Not one bus driver is going to, you know, close the door on a, on a student who hasn't. So we'll have to just do our due diligence in trying to secure that funding.
It's challenging, but thank you very much for it.
Thanks, John. Great. All right. Next up is, um, my entry plan. I have it, I think I have to. Um, I have it electronically for those at home. Before I go through that. Um, I'd like to introduce, um, my coach. As all of you know, I'm part of the new superintendent's induction program. Um, and for the program, um, I have the opportunity to be assigned a coach. I think I have the best coach of all the candidates, Maureen LaCroix. Maureen is a retired superintendent from Bedford Public Schools. Uh, so Maureen's working with me, um, over the course of three years. Um, we have opportunities for us to have one-on-one coaching sessions. She was part of our admin retreat, uh, to give me feedback on that. She'll be part of administrative meetings that I hold, walkthroughs that I do at the schools, and a sounding board for me. So there was nothing that was said tonight that she hasn't heard already. But I just want to introduce you to Maureen and, and give Maureen an opportunity to just tell you a little bit more about the, um, NISIP program.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I'm really pleased to be here and delighted to get to, uh, coach this new superintendent who I don't have to tell this school committee, you've hired somebody who is quite well-prepared to assume the role of leader of this district. Um, a little bit about NISIP. Um, this will be my eighth year, uh, coaching in NISIP. All of the coaches in NISIP are retired superintendents who have worked in, uh, the state of Massachusetts. And we coach new superintendents and we also coach superintendents who are new to the state of Massachusetts because every state is different in terms of how they approach the work of superintendent and sometimes how they approach the work of leadership. Um, NISIP has been around for fifteen years, so it's starting its sixteenth year this year. Um, and Dr. Williams is part of that sixteen cohort in NISIP. When NISIP first started, it was really the brainchild of the then, um, Associate Commissioner at the Department of Ed who joined together with Tom Scott, who was the Executive Director of the Superintendents Association. And they joined forces to say, how can we do a better job supporting superintendents in Massachusetts so that they can meet the mark and lead school systems to be the best in the country? And from that conversation and then a number of conversations that followed, NISIP was born. A big supporter of NISIP from day one, a big cheerleader for the NISIP program, has been the Mass Association of School Committees. And I can tell you as a NISIP coach, I have appreciated the opportunity to partner with people from MASC on occasion to talk through things like, so what's the role of the superintendent? What's the role of the school committee? And how do both parties support one another, both in understanding their individual roles, but understanding more importantly, how to work together as a team? Because we're all in, in this for the same reason, to create schools that are the very best they can be for the children that we serve. As Dr. Williams said, NISIP is both a coaching program and a program steeped in content. So the superintendents who are part of the program spend maybe a half a dozen or more days a year outside of the district with colleagues and coaches. And our time is spent learning and talking about leadership. And we think that that, uh, combination of personal coaching and content coaching is important because you can't go out and say, oh, I'm going to be a coach and then not be able to talk about coaching about what. And our coaching is focused on transformational leaders. We want to be able to support folks who can come into school districts that are already solid in doing good work, but can do better. And what does that transformation look like? How do you get there? So we work together on things like leadership teams. What should a leadership team look like? What should the content of those meetings be? What are the roles of the people at the table? We will very much be focused on teaching and learning. That's what schools are about. So you will see tonight, when you see the entry plan, it's going to focus on the superintendent being a learner, being out there and learning, even though she's been here as assistant superintendent. She and I have a lot in common. I was assistant superintendent in the district where I very fortunately became superintendent. But when I put on that new pair of glasses as superintendent, I saw the district from a different perspective. And so the, the job this year in terms of being new superintendent will be to say, okay, I thought I understood that about the system. But now that I'm a superintendent, I sort of want to get up here and look at it again and see, see what's going on, see what I didn't understand when I was in the other role as assistant superintendent. So if I, I were to sum it up, I would say what you'll see this year is the superintendent as a learner in the district, going out there, learning from you folks, learning from parents. Most importantly, learning from students. So what, what is it like for students in the East Bridgewater Public Schools? What do they have to share with the superintendent to say, hmm, this is what I've been thinking about that might make our school, might make our district better? So it's a, it's an exciting year to get out there and, and learn. Our, our focus is always all children. So NISIP is steeped in saying, we're focused on equity. And equity meaning that every child gets what he or she needs. We make sure every child has the opportunities that they need to succeed here. And those opportunities will be different for each child. What we want to do is kick down barriers that might be getting in the way of some who are not getting those opportunities. So I am very excited to be here. I was thinking as I drove in here today, I came, I, I'm coaching in Braintree. So I was in Braintree before I came here. Usually I drive in from Plymouth, so I come in from a different, uh, route. And so coming in, I just had this deep appreciation of the town. I came down Route eighteen and then came into the school complex from the athletic side, which I hadn't entered the property that way before. And I'm just like, driving along, I've entered from the front door part here before and I'm thinking, this is like an amazing campus. So all of you should be proud of that as a community because that's, that's important, right? The space that we spend time in as adults and as children, it makes a difference. And this is beautiful and just seeing, seeing your community out there. It was just, uh, what a nice way to enter on a beautiful night. So happy to be here and happy to answer any questions.
We plan the weather specifically for you.
Thank you.
Nice little sunset.
Um, thank you so much, by the way, um, to hear about NISIP and, and kind of the good that it's trying to do to help connect superintendents to the communities and so forth. And then, uh, kind of the connection with MASC and so forth. And, um, it's about trying to be a better version of a district or a better version of a superintendent or a school committee or the individual students, whatever. So, uh, I love the concept of, uh, Dr. Williams having a cohort that she can have discussions with that are outside of this space and a creative kind of learning, uh, environment for her. I guess one question I would ask would be, and maybe in time we'll see it, are there best practices that are talked about in some of these cohorts? Say, hey, listen, this is what we do in our district. And then how does the superintendent then get that to, whether it be the school committee or the individual building principals to kind of say, here's the direction? Although the fact that it's a, you know, it's a learning kind of, you know, about the district and so forth, application of things that are already working great in other districts. Is there connectivity in that with?
Yeah, both, both go on. So a lot of introduction of best practices. We, we try not to presume from the NISIP lens that there's one way to do things. And, and I say that in the context of, school districts are very contextual. School districts are not all the same.
No.
Their needs are not all the same. What the local population wants in the schools is not always the same. So you have to be tuned into that and not say, this is the one way.
Sure.
To do it. But certainly introduce the idea of what's important in leadership. What's important as you supervise principals? Here are things to think about. And then let the superintendent ruminate on that and start to think of her plan of how she wants to approach it. But yes, a lot of reading, introduction of best practices, introduction of things like strategic thinking, political thinking, um, just things you need to have rattling around here as you're leading the district. And most importantly, we talk about, you get into the superintendency and I'll, I'll probably say this from a personal perspective. As assistant superintendent, you're sort of, you're the doer. You're out there doing this, you're doing that, you're doing that. We really work hard with superintendents and say, you are the CEO now. You need to step back. And here's where you'll be successful if you're superintendent, if you learn to hire good people around you, some of the people at. If you learn to hire good people around you, some of the people at the table tonight, and you learn, work through them and let them do it. Don't you always try to be the doer. Partner with them, work through them. It's key if you're running the organization."
That's a work in progress.
And it's always a work in progress. Yeah.
Thanks, Maureen.
All right, thank you.
A nice little segue. As Maureen mentioned, I have an entry plan. The entry plan has been shared with the leadership team as well as I shared it with all staff in our district Welcome Day. So, next step is to share it with all of you this evening. And then it will go out through Parent Square tomorrow to all parents in the district as well as be published on the town's website so any community members can have access to it as well. So, I'll run through it with you. First, there's a letter to the community and to Maureen's point, you know, certainly having been in the district for over 30 years in many capacities, but specifically in the last 10 years, certainly looking at the district through a specific lens, that now as a superintendent, I have a responsibility to go back over everything and making sure I'm having conversations and listening to all stakeholders and looking at it now through the superintendent's lens as opposed to any other role that I've held. And that's the main reason for having this. I'm calling it, you know, the Listening and Learning Tour, an opportunity to hear from all stakeholders. So, first, there's a letter to families. In my message on Parent Square, along with my letter, there is also the date for the first public forum that I will be holding. So, although I'll be meeting with lots of parent groups, community groups, there may be families who are not affiliated with any particular organizations or groups. So, I certainly want to give an opportunity for anyone in the community or any family to come out and share with me. So, there will be, there is a date. It is September 30th at 7:00 p.m. here in the Junior Senior High Library. That will be in my message tomorrow. As well as a link to the survey questions that I'll be asking during the forum. So, if anyone cannot come, then certainly they can still give their feedback through that link. So, that will be in tomorrow's message. In my entry plan also is the rationale. Why am I doing it? As I shared with all of you, it's for me to learn, for me to learn about all the aspects of the district from this vantage point. How am I going to be able to work through this entry plan? It's the interviews, the conversations, the forums, the surveys, all the information that will be gathered from all the stakeholders that are listed on the next page through a variety of opportunities. And then the what am I looking for, that part, you'll see the five questions that I'll be asking when I meet with the stakeholder groups. In a nutshell, really wanting to hear from them. What do they think of the strengths? What should we be protecting in the district? What are some of the challenges that we're facing? What are some of our opportunities for growth that maybe we haven't tapped into yet? What disparities exist for students in order for them to be able to access all the resources and opportunities that we have within the district? And then to think forward about the future, five to 10 years from now, what should some of our goals be? So, I'll spend between, it will start officially tomorrow, once this goes public, and I'll start having those opportunities to meet with groups and gather information. And that will be through the end of November. And then, as we move into the next page, you'll see, these are the groups that I'll be meeting with. It'll be individual conversations if people feel more comfortable that way. It'll be surveys, visits to classrooms, meeting with school groups, meeting with community groups, and then having a document review. Certainly, you've heard through school committee meetings, all the different plans we have, all the different data that we collect and looking through that data just to see what else I should be focusing on. And then between December and January will give me an opportunity to actually look at all the data that's been collected, find commonalities that's come out of the data, identify what family and communities feel our strengths are as well as students, what are some areas for us to focus on. And so, then the final stage of the entry plan will be in the spring where we're actually looking to use that data to develop our district development plan, our strategic plan, our improvement plan. They're called a number of things, but basically it's the plan that we'll develop that will carry us through the next three to five years in what we want to accomplish so that the district is what we as a community want it to be. So, that's the plan. I'm sticking to it. So, if anyone has any questions, if there's anything or any groups or any pieces that you feel need to be added to it, then certainly I can do that. Hopefully, it's all encompassing to make sure that we've given opportunity for voice for students, opportunity for voice for staff, families, and stakeholders within the community.
Great job.
Yeah, it's evident you've put quite a bit of time into this already. And I think going through this exercise is going to be truly eye-opening, partly in many, many ways. So, I think it's great.
Great, thank you. Great. So, that will go out tomorrow. Is everyone receiving Parent Square messages?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect. Yeah. More than you ever wanted.
Text, email.
Great. This is Ms. McPartlin. Next up is, it's in your packet, I just wanted to bring to your attention, we had an opportunity to meet with the principals today, so they're well aware. I know we've talked about the year-long calendar, when there'll be opportunities for me to give you updates on my goals so that it's not just happening when it comes time to evaluate. That will happen throughout the year as well as opportunities for principals to come and give you updates. One of the things that Chairman Peker and I discussed was opportunities like the robotics opportunity that we had last spring where students and staff came and shared what's actually going on in the classroom. So, I've asked principals to make sure that they incorporate those opportunities when they come and share with you at the school committee meetings. We want to highlight students as much as possible and all the wonderful things that they're doing and the staff that make it possible. So, they'll be sure to incorporate that in their updates. Parent Square, you've all successfully received your welcome email and now you can see the Parent Square messages that are going out to all the schools. And then lastly, the Central School Building Committee update. So, our schematic design has been submitted to MSBA. They're giving us a cursory review of things that for us to consider, that we can adjust. There will be a vote of the MSBA in October. And then, once that vote happens, we will be ready to move forward with the approval. So, it has been set that a town meeting, a special town meeting, will be held on November 10th, Monday, November 10th. And that needs a two-thirds majority vote. And if that's successful, then it will be on the ballot on November 15th, that Saturday, for majority vote for approval of the new central school building. So, because at this point, our submissions are all in, we're dedicating these couple of months to just making sure that everyone and anyone has the information about the school building project. We want everyone to be making an informed decision and that's making sure everyone has all the information that they need about the project, answering any questions they might have, dispelling maybe some myths about the project, but certainly anything that we can do as a committee to provide information. We have a website that can be accessed through the town website. We have public forums. We have another public forum coming up next week on the 23rd at 7:00 o'clock at the Central School. This one will be in-person. We were at all the open houses. We attended the Council on Aging for a presentation. The Business Expo will have a table coming up on October 19th. The Veteran Services will be doing an event at the Commercial Club. I believe that is October 24th. We'll be at that event. In any additional opportunities, I spoke to the YMCA. They were very supportive in having information there for any families that come to the YMCA. We'll have visuals of what the school building would look like. We have the QR code for more information as well as reaching out to Cadence Academy, knowing we have young children and families attending Cadence. So, any opportunities that you think of where we can maybe reach out to groups, organizations? And like I said, we want everyone coming to town meeting informed about the project and having all the information.
Would it be, the Cadence Academy, I know there's one here in town, but some people might use the one on Whitman.
Right, so both of those. I actually ran into the former owner, Denise Coffey, about a week or so ago, and she actually said the Whitman has more East Bridgewater families.
I was going to think that, yeah.
And the East Bridgewater, the East Bridgewater one tends to have more Bridgewater families.
Okay.
So, we'll be sure that both are included.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Williams? Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
We'll go into reports and discussions. So, we have already done the drama trip, the grade eight field trip.
Well, we didn't do the, we didn't talk about the walking.
Oh, that's right. We did.
Yeah.
There's material enclosed.
There is.
Yeah.
So, it's a bus trip.
Yep.
June 2nd through the 5th, 26th, agreed. Any questions or comments on that?
My son went last year and he had a great time. It was like a great experience.
Mine did as well.
I think it's an opportunity for the kids.
Agreed.
And Mr. Silver will be here next month in case there's any questions about any of the trips.
Great. We've already had the busing update.
More than you wanted.
Next, we have substitute teacher rate of pay. We have material enclosed.
Yes. So, this is something that we've been discussing, I'd say at least over the last year. I reached out to districts in our roundtable, about 24 districts, just asking them what currently they have as their daily substitute rate. We're all certainly jockeying for substitutes to cover teacher absences. So, in your packet is what we currently have as our guidelines. We have daily substitutes at a rate of $90. We have building-based substitutes that are scheduled to come in every single day, knowing in buildings, there's always at least one absence. And that rate right now is $125 a day. We have long-term substitutes that cover primarily, they would cover one classroom for a period of time, maybe a maternity leave, maybe a medical leave, and that's at $200 a day. And then we have one-year contracts. So, when we know we haven't been able to fill a position, we tend to then hire on a one-year agreement. Or we have a teacher that's taking a full year off, we hire on that one-year agreement. And we typically will go with the salary that's comparable with the teacher's salary scale, knowing that they have all responsibilities of a teacher in that full year. So, in reaching out to other districts, also in your packet, you'll see the results of the survey that I received back from a number of districts, Marshfield, Cohasset, Abington, Plymouth, Stoughton, Hanover, the list goes on. And the daily substitute rate ranges from $90 to $175. And so, looking at that, looking at the average, that's why I am proposing $125 a day. Like I said, we want to remain competitive. Oftentimes, our substitutes are in multiple districts and certainly the higher the rate, the more likely they are to come to your school district. So, I don't want to make it too complicated. I know districts have a different rate for retirees. They have rates for certified versus non-certified. It does get very convoluted when we're trying to sort through all of that with work slips and payroll. So, I prefer to just keep it neat and clean, $125 a day for that daily substitute. As far as building-based and long-term substitutes, because they are at the school every single day, have the expectations of a classroom teacher, I would like both of those to be $200 a day. That wouldn't change the long-term substitute. They'd be staying at the 200, but the building-based substitutes would be at a $200 a day rate and then keeping the one-year agreements the same. So, basically just proposing to change the first two columns, the daily substitute from 90 to 125 and the building-based substitutes from 125 to 200. I don't know if there was any specific questions.
How many building-based substitutes do we have?
One per building.
One per building.
And how many long-term substitutes do we, and I know that probably fluctuates.
It fluctuates based upon mainly if FMAA leaves, but.
With.
I would say, based, I can tell you last year, we probably had six or seven. And that, you know, that's for a time period. It's not all year. You know what I mean?
And that's all schools.
Yeah.
Do you think we'll end up having more than one building-based substitute per building?
No, no, we would keep the one per building. I think increasing the daily rate might give us a bigger pool of people that are interested. You know, certainly when we find substitutes that work out really well, we want to keep them coming back. Lots of times, they end up being hired as teaching assistants, but that's, you know, the purpose. A lot of them are maybe just graduating from college, trying to make an entry into a school district. And so, when we find, you know, someone who's successful, we certainly want to give them those opportunities. But building-based subs is just one per building.
So, currently on here, there's increased increments, right? So, if your building-based substitute is the same as your long-term substitute, where's the incentive for the long-term substitute? And the only reason I ask that, I mean, if we, if you go up $50 in the daily substitute and you go up $50 on your building substituted at 175, you still have that increase for the long-term substitute. There's still a carrot there, I guess. You know? I know it's only 25 bucks, but in the long run, 25 bucks can add up sometimes.
Right. And what tends to happen is with building-based subs, from year to year, we've seen that each year they're hiring a different person. This year, we've seen that we have consistency in building-based subs staying. And so, looking at how we adjust that for them or we keep it the same. So, like I said, with the building-based subs we have this year, I believe Central Schools is a new building-based sub, but Mitchell School and the Junior Senior High School are the consistent, they're consistent people who have been in the district. And so, maybe it needs to be looked at a little bit different for the people who maintain employment in the district and whether we want to make any adjustments to them from year to year. But certainly understand your point that building-based substitutes have a different level of responsibility than a long-term substitute as far as they're not doing the planning, they're not responsible for grading, they're basically manning the classroom in the teacher's absence as opposed to the long-term substitute has that responsibility. So, point well taken. And you.
Would you be fine with that amendment?
Yes.
Comfortable with that?
My main concern is the daily substitute rate.
Yeah, sure.
Where, you know, significantly lower than other districts.
Yeah.
And it's making it very challenging for us to, and some of them I wouldn't even propose. I mean, a couple of the districts are significantly higher and it's not something I would even propose, but.
And would you say you use the daily, the subs who are here, the building-based subs, they're typically working every single day?
Every day.
I think 175 is good, if you think it's good.
Mm-hmm.
Save us a little.
Do we have any data with regards to absenteeism on the teacher side of things? I know we harp on absenteeism with regards to the student side of things. And I just wonder if there's a trend with regards to absenteeism on the teacher side of things and from a budgetary standpoint, if we need to maybe plan for an increase in this line item, so to speak.
So, because we've talked and spent a lot of time on student absenteeism, we felt it was, you know, our responsibility to look at staff as well. So, we did, last spring, we met with the administrative team, had them go through the data of their staff attendance. And we look at chronic absenteeism just like we look at student chronic absenteeism. So, 15% of your school year, if you're absent, that's considered chronic. We met with the association, Ms. McPartlin and I actually met with the association at the, no, over the summer. They all blend together. Where we have established the process that when a teacher gets to 10 absences. Where we have established the process that when a teacher gets to 10 absences, outside of a maternity leave or a known surgery, when a teacher gets to 10 absences, that's a conversation with the administration, just to see, like, can we be supporting you with, you know, is there something extenuating going on that's contributing to these absences? And then when they get to 15 absences, then we're starting to document. And like I said, these are one-off absences, not consistent with a medical condition or a medical leave. So I feel like we definitely need to pay more attention to it, because we've seen in the past couple of years that there has been a, an increase. Certainly, this conversation is paired with it, as well as staff covering for each other. You know, we're pulling sometimes staff from their planning time to cover classrooms, because certainly, we don't want students without that supervision. So we feel like we have that obligation for all of our staff to feel they're supported. So.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So I, we don't have an action item.
Oh, that was my other question. When would we, when would you like this to take effect, immediately?
I would prefer, but if you feel.
I mean, if somebody's, if somebody's working you down on a number, then we should at least try to get you there faster.
Yeah, we can just add.
Before he chips away anymore.
We can just add it as an action item.
Do we save it for the end?
Yeah, I'll do it at the end. Any other questions?
Is it financially feasible in terms, or can we afford?
Yes, so I, I've asked Mr. Shea that question.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. And, and right now, when we have to pull staff members, they're getting coffee saved for that.
They're gonna come for the period, yeah.
So where we save in one area, we, we spend in another.
In order to have high standards from an educational standpoint, we need our teachers to show up.
It, it's important, you know, when they're, when, and I, and staff need to realize the level of importance that they have on the educational system and what goes on in the classroom. When they're not here, you can put any substitute in the world in the room, it's not the same as that teacher.
There's a break in learning.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for putting all that together.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
So we'll do that as an action item at the end?
Yep, yeah. Appreciate all the research comparing to other districts, too.
No, 90 is really low.
I would agree, yeah.
Well, when you look at everybody else's.
Any update, any subcommittees that have met since our last meeting?
No.
I didn't think so, okay. In your packet is, of the school committee year-long agenda, which we already talked about a little bit during the superintendents.
I have one thing to add.
Okay.
It was, um, it was to add the operating protocols at, on the August meeting. They were at our August meeting this year, but we had to put it onto the meeting. I'm pretty sure it's on, hopefully on tonight's meeting, I guess we'll find out.
It is, yeah, it's an action item. Also, add it to the.
August meeting.
Annual review, okay. Yes, so the MASC, MASs Annual Joint Conference is from November 12th through the 14th. Anyone on the committee is welcome to go. Peter is our representative for voting perspective. And there's materials included in your packet about the information related to that conference, as well as some additional learning opportunities that were happening throughout the month of September and October.
And anyone that's interested in attending, Michael will register you, so if you just want to reach out to, send an email to Michael, and he can get you registered.
And for anybody who doesn't understand, so we, as a district, have a vote. So we will take a look at whatever resolutions are put forth through the Resolutions Committee. We decide as a group yea or nay, and then whatever the group says, we bring forward as our vote during that, that time.
So you should take the time to read these resolutions before the next meeting, because then we have to vote on, at the next meeting. So then Peter will bring them to, to the November.
And I think the thing to pay, if I remember from previous school committee member, the thing that we want to pay most attention to is the "Therefore Be It" resolve. That's kind of the essence of what they're trying to get across. Read it all, but it's the "Therefore Be It" resolved that is talking about what MASC is looking for guidance on.
Are they having, are they doing it this year? You know how you went in the past where they have this little meeting about it to talk about them before?
So I think they had that in June, if I recall, and then I don't know if they have anything prior to that.
There's one they did, but I don't remember.
And then there keeps coming up with some policy stuff that you might need to get together on.
Yeah. Does anybody think they're gonna go to the conference?
I was looking at the offerings, I think I'm just gonna do, there's a charting the course in October, I think over in Franklin, and I think we'll, we'll do that, I'll do that one.
Yeah, and the, the charting the courses that they have now, so they don't offer any more from what, from now, once to October.
Until next year.
Until next year.
After the election.
Yeah, until, they had offered them in May before.
Yeah, I think I went in, I might have gone in May or June, if I remember right.
But sometimes, like, they're all over the state.
Yeah.
Try to find one local.
I started looking, and I'm like, I better hop on the Franklin one while I can.
Yes.
Yeah.
I got lucky.
Okay, Mr. Shea passed out some financial updates, so we'll turn it over to him.
All right. The first page is the status of our operating budget as of today. This hopefully looks familiar to most of you. I did add some new lines to this report. So as of today, the fiscal year 2026 budget, the non-salary line item, we have a budget of 5.7 million. So far, we have 1,001 in expenses, and we have accrued 2.8 million in expenses, with a total of almost 4 million expenses accounted for. We have an available balance of 1,750,000, 1,750,000. And for comparative purposes, I, I, down below, you can see where we were last year at the same time, September 16th. We had an available balance last year of 1,1 million in the non-salary. Salary, we have an available balance right now of almost 19 million. That's because we don't, we do not accrue or encumber for salary. We only encumber for non-salary. As the year goes along, I'll be giving you updates on my projections for the year-end for salary, but right now, we don't have those. I've added a line for busing, which is new in this report that I haven't added before. I also, for fiscal year '26, I added school choice. If you remember, as part of the budget process, we reallocated 250,000 of school choice funding to, to the budget. So I added that line item. Right now, we have not expensed anything out of, out of that line item. The other thing I added, and I added because I think it's important with the way that town financial status of the financials of the town are, there's a group of accounts that fall under the DPW, which is school facility accounts. So I, I think it's important for us to, to pay attention to those accounts also. So I'm going to add that line item going forward. The budget in that, for those group of accounts is 700, almost 720,000. The town does not do, they don't do POs, so they don't encumber or accrue any expenses, so that's why you see there's no encumbrances there. So there's an available balance in that line item of 600,000. I, I have detail, I can show you what backs up all these numbers, so I don't want you to think I'm, I mean, I'll present more information as we go along.
So how, so there's no POs for trackability, but you keep a separate spreadsheet or something else that we can take a look at what that goes to?
If you, are you talking about the school facility?
Yeah.
We can look at that now, if you'd like.
Sure.
So on page, page 12. I'm sorry, page, I think, page 14.
I was gonna say, I think we go 14, then 13?
14, then 13.
Okay.
Making sure you're paying attention.
Page 14, which should be 13. These are the different line items for the town or the school facility budget.
Okay, I got it.
So there's maintenance, repair, maintenance, heating, supplies, this is where most, all of our custodial supplies comes out of. So what's recorded in this is only what has been paid, not what has been accrued, or...
And I believe you've said in the past that the non-salary line item, the majority of spending on that happens early in the school year?
Yeah.
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 Is there a finer detail, a breakdown of the, I mean, there are line items here in this, but each one of these items, I mean, they're large numbers. Are these broken down a little smaller from the BT, DPW? Do they put together essentially a budget and present it to you, John?
I do not see any presentation of a budget. I think they present it to the finance committee.
Okay, just not aware of how it works, that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
They do present it to the finance committee, but they don't get granular. That would be the department head's responsibility to make sure.
Well, and then the billing responsibility goes, Dr. Williams, am I right, that the billing responsibility, facilities-wise, falls on the principals? But if they want, as you, for the business side of things, if we decide we need to do X, Y, or Z, the building principal brings it forward to you, and then we have to go to DPW for some of this stuff, or?
For ma, for maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of time.
Or whatever line, I get, general question, whatever is managed by DPW. Like, I, there's a big line item in there for heating, right, which they're just paying the bill somehow, but it's going through DPW?
Right.
Like, that is what it is, right?
And then they order the supplies?
They'll order the custodial supplies. If there's a door that's broken, usually, the principal will contact the town facility manager, and he'll either have the DPW staff come up and fix it, or bring an outside company in to fix it.
Okay. Looks like there's a difference in budgeted for this year versus expended last year? So, just like with everything, there's been cuts?
It appears that way, yes.
Okay.
They happen to mention where they cut from last year in the, in that, the school facilities, like, was it supplies or?
We'd have to watch, like, the, probably the DPW presentation of the finance committee, sure that they went through.
I think this year, it may make sense to have them come in and present to the school committee, because this is really, it's the school facility budget.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I agree.
Especially in times of reduction, you know, making sure that we're aware that even though it's a reduction in their budget, it ultimately has an impact on how our department runs.
All right, in your, in your package, if I num, if I numbered these correctly, page three through page 12, that is the line item detail on the non-salary school budget. So page one is, is the summary. This is the line item detail. It'll show you, we'll just start at page three, School Committee Other Expenses. We have a budget of 11,000. We've encumbered 950,000. We spent almost 6,400. We have an unencumbered balance of 3,651. All those add up to the overall available balance of 1.7, 1,750,001, which I reported on the first page. So what this does is gives you the line item detail of our budget.
So actually, page 13 is the last fiscal year of the facility budget.
Yeah.
And 14 is this year, so you can see that they reduced maintenance in buildings and grounds, repair and maintenance of equipment, and repair and maintenance on elevators. Everything else stayed the same.
Yeah, and we still spent 60, almost $66,000 more in heating oil last year, and we budgeted the same dollar figure this year. So chances are, we're gonna be over budget again on that line item, if I had to take a guess.
I would guess.
Next. Page two is the revolving fund balances. These are the balances as of today compared to where we ended fiscal year '25. School lunch, we have above 400,000 in that account. Circuit breaker, we, we have, we received notice that in this, in the state supplemental budget, that they increased the circuit breaker percentage for transportation to 75% reimbursement. So we received 77,849 dollars in funding that was unexpected, so that's good news.
And that, that comes back to us, or does it go back to the general fund to the town? Oh, good.
That's in, in, in this circuit breaker account, 77.
Oh, good.
And that covers homeless transportation, is that what, or is that just?
It, we can use it to cover.
No, but like.
Predominantly out-of-district transportation.
Out-of-district transportation.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yeah, that's why that money comes back. So, so it sounds like maybe they listened a little bit?
They listened a little.
They listened a little, okay, just.
I'd like to listen a lot more.
A lot more, yeah, but I guess that's good to know, that, that, you know.
They heard that.
They, they heard that there's challenges with regards to budgeting in, because does this go back to an unfunded mandate?
It goes back to an unfunded mandate.
McKenney-Vento Act, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, listen more.
The, this year's circuit breaker funding should be coming out any day now.
Still don't know?
I still don't know.
Wow.
The state is sick of me emailing.
Wow, they're struggling, because they think a lot of the funding has gone other places.
Yes.
Any idea, have any speculations?
Well, I'm hoping it's about 1.3.
What were you anticipating?
1.3.
And if we get more, that's even better.
If it falls short, more challenge.
School choice is 771,000, pretty much the same as the year-end. Athletics, the revolving balance is 49,000. That's with the fees that we've received, preschool is staying steady.
Uh, in these ti, go ahead, sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, in these times, and if we're asking and requiring more of the community when it comes to things like paying for busing, and I always look at school building rental as an opportunity for us to... building rental as an opportunity for us to try to claw back any type of additional funds as possible. Feels like this school has something going on at it all the time, and...
But there's probably only certain things you can spend the school building rental money on.
I think Peter's questioning the amount of fees we charge.
Oh.
How much is it to run?
Oh.
It varies depending on...
Well, then I think we need to simplify that on, that should be something we look towards. If it's complicated, then let's simplify.
It's definitely something we should look at during this budget process.
Yep, okay.
I got a question on that. So June 30, why would the, that revolving account go so low at June 30?
Which one?
The school building rental?
Uh, because we, we spent any money that we received during the, during that year.
Okay.
This, this 32,582, a lot of that is from last year's performances.
Okay. Other ones in May and...
Right.
Yeah.
The dance recitals and things like that. So that, that money, it, it's fiscal year 2025 money, but it didn't come in until fiscal year '26.
Right. And I guess to parlay it off of the previous conversation with regards to maintenance side of things, that money, a portion of that, obviously, increase should be going to offset any maintenance challenges that we have.
Yes.
That's it, thank you.
Bussing fees is at 132,000, and the remaining accounts, Little Vikings, music, the drama accounts, and the after-school activity accounts are pretty consistent to where they were at the end of fiscal year '25, except for Little Vikings. Most of the expenses come in during the summer of fiscal year '26 for Little Vikings. Revenue comes in, in fiscal year '25, but the expenses come in fiscal year '26.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate the detail.
It seems like it's been a while since we looked at the building rental fees, and I think that was the only fees, but it seems like it's been a while since we looked at those.
We will be.
Well, you did such a great job with some of the, and obviously, we got one tonight for the substitute teacher pay. We had a, you did a very nice job with the busing fees last year, then we had another one with one of the contract negotiations and understanding where that is.
Do you think when we go to look at the building rental fees, can we also know what other districts are paying, so?
Oh, yeah, that, that will be...
Yeah, I think that's where I was going, yeah.
Thanks, John. We know you have a lot to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
There was a quarterly report from Reed's Collaborative included in everyone's packet. Any discussion or questions on that?
Nope.
All right. We have a ton of action items to go through. All right, here we go. I'll seek a motion to approve payroll warrant, 9PS, dated 8/27/2025.
So moved.
Second.
Second, sorry. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Payroll?
Ah, abstain.
Okay, so that passes. Actions required after review, entertain a motion to approve account payable warrants, number eight, eight dash, slash 20, slash 25, dated August 13th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh-uh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
And entertain a motion to approve account payable warrant, hashtag 10, 9 dot 3 dot 25, dated September 3rd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve the July 14th, 2025 school committee meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Um, actions required, entertain a motion to approve, oh, Crystal and...
I was gonna ask, I'm sorry, I went to, I abstained from that last one, so...
Yep. Um, actions required, entertain a motion to approve the June 18th, 2025 school committee meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
And two abstentions. Entertain a motion to approve the homeschool education plans as reviewed and recommended by Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Jennifer McPartland. The superintendent recommends approval.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve the drama club's proposed out-of-state field trip to Walt Disney World, Orlando, Florida, from April 15th through the 19th, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
Good.
Any discussion?
I think it's a great idea. I think it's a good opportunity for the kids.
I agree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve the proposed grade eight out-of-state trip, field, out-of-state field trip to Washington, DC from June 2nd through the 5th, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Also a good opportunity for the kids.
Agreed.
Great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve the proposed East Bridgewater Junior/Senior High School field trip to Paris, France, and Rome, Italy in April 2027.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we need a school committee member to go along on that?
Chaperone.
Me too.
Me too, okay.
Maybe a superintendent.
All those in favor?
Also a good opportunity for the kids.
Agreed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, okay, there was a memo in our packets, so we'll entertain a motion to have surplus obsolete playground equipment at the Gordon W. Mitchell School.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Stuff we have to get rid of. I wonder what John's gonna do with it.
Yeah.
I forgot that, but...
John, where's it gonna go? Do you know yet?
Your backyard?
Recycling? What type, is it, any of it metal?
Yes.
So then maybe some of it can you get, like, sold to metal? You know, like, you could maybe make some money off of it?
Like scrap?
Like scrap metal.
Loaded into my truck.
When he's out checking on his trucks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, the school committee 2025, 2026 operating protocols were included in everyone's packet, so I will entertain a motion to approve those protocols.
Should we go over them, just quickly? Since the new people may or may not know of them. Do you, does anybody have any questions on these operating protocols, if you, or have you had time to review them?
Received them already.
Do we need to sign them tonight?
Um, well, is there, is there a copy to sign?
No, we'll have to get it.
We can sign it at the next meeting.
We'll have to get, yeah.
We'll get everybody on it.
Yeah.
So we can review it tonight, and then sign off on it the next time.
Sure.
See table?
Whatever y'all wanna do.
Well, you know, actually, why don't we...
What'd you say, you don't have it, or you do have it?
Well, we, we have the...
The previously signed one.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so I...
So why don't we table this to approve at the next meeting in October? Everyone review this, and then we'll have it ready to sign.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll entertain a motion to increase the daily substitute pay to 125 dollars, and increase the building-based substitute pay to 175 dollars per day.
Leaving the 200 per day for long-term stuff.
Correct.
And have that, and have that take place immediately?
Effective immediately.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Action items are done. Any updates from MASC on workshops?
I do. So I have, I talked to our rep, his name is Sean Costello, he's the new field rep for East Bridgewater, and he, I asked him about roles and responsibilities and ethics. He said it's approximately three hours, and that's conversational, and, you know, people can ask questions and stuff. And he gave me some dates. He has Monday, October 27th, at 6:00 PM or after 6:00 PM, and then Saturday, October 11th in the morning, Saturday, October 18th in the morning, and November 1st, Saturday morning. I can tell you right now, I can't attend the 18th or the 1st. I couldn't attend, but I, I'm...
You said the 11th, the 18th?
I've been to this workshop mid, 15 million times, so if I can't go, it's not a big deal.
Was the 11th, the 18th, and?
Uh, the 11th, the 18th, and November 1st, and October 27th, which is a Monday night. And I just have to get back to him to let him know what date was selected. And he said all of September is booked, and he's got, he's got a lot of bookings. I mean, unless you wanna open it up to any other days, I can check.
I can do the 27th.
The Monday?
Yeah.
It's after 6:00 PM? I can do that.
So it would be 6 to 9?
Yes.
There is a special town meeting scheduled for that evening.
Oh, we can't do it that night.
Okay.
We probably have to be at the special town meeting.
Unless it's done prior to the...
The special time meeting is probably gonna be talked about...
Probably 7.
It's probably gonna be talking about, uh, the central school.
No, that one's in November. There's a few other warrants here.
I didn't sync up my work from my record.
I don't think there's anything for the schools on the 27th, but...
So the 11th of October, I believe that's Columbus Day weekend?
Yes.
That's tough for me. How's the 18th? I mean, you can't come, right?
But I've already been, I mean...
You could teach the workshop.
I wouldn't want to. No, the only thing, the only benefit to me being there is to ask questions that I know people might not know, that I already know. Hopefully, he'll touch upon that stuff.
Okay.
Sometimes they don't.
Do we have times on the Saturday dates?
Um, no, just in the morning, so we, we could probably do, like, 9 to 12. Yeah, 8 to 11 or 9 to 12.
I can do any of the Saturday.
I didn't, oh, he's coming from Marshfield, so it's not that far, yeah.
Yeah. Any conflicts with the 18th?
Right now, it's open for me.
It's my wedding anniversary, but it's fine.
Tell us all about the...
I'll recap it for you.
Okay, so let's go with the 18th, from 9 to 12.
Okay.
Where is that here?
Yeah.
And then I asked him about another workshop, too. He said he could do, well, I had initially asked him if we could add open meeting law to that, but he said he doesn't recommend it, because it's too much in one meeting, and that, he said the open meeting law one is about an hour to an hour and a half, and he recommends doing that another time. And I asked him maybe about, like, superintendent evaluation or adding it to something else, and he said he could do, he could do those together, or do, do something together.
That would be good.
I guess we can talk about whatever we think's the most important to do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we'll do that on the 18th. And then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting and make, to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purpose, and not to return to open session, and it will be to approve executive session minutes from the May 6th, 2025 School Committee Executive Session Meeting.
Motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Again, thank you to EV Cam.